Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May ninth Wilmington School Committee meeting. I'd like to start the meeting by starting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll join me, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to thank the members of the Wilmington public who not only attended the town meeting last week, but actually had the wherewithal to stick around until we renamed the high school auditorium in honor of Joanne Benton. I think that's a wonderful fitting tribute to Joanne's legacy. So I'd like to thank the town of Wilmington for voting to approve that. We'll start with approval of items by consensus. Let's start with approval of minutes, March 28th, 2018, and April 25th, 2018, regular session. Do I have a motion? M.J., and a second. Julie, all those in favor? That appears to be unanimous. Oh, thank you. Thought I saw your arm up there. M.J.'s got two arms going. All right, and we'll seek, seeking approval for warrants, G. 425, G. 426, G. 427, R. 232, R. 233, L. 52, L. 53, F. S. 42, F. S. 43. Do I have a motion? Jen, and a second from Julie. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. All right, and warrants payroll, 5. 9. 2018. Do I have a motion? M.J., second by Jen. All those in favor? That is six in favor with one abstention, being Peggy. Warrant CB 16. Do I have a motion? Peggy, second by Tom. All those in favor? That is five in favor with two abstentions, myself and M.J. Warrants sped 32, sped 33, sped 34. Do I have a motion? Peggy, a second Julie. All those in favor? That is also likewise, five in favor with two abstentions. All right, and we'll move on to our student presentation. The Wilmington High School grades 10 through 12, Greece, Italy trip presentation. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Caroline. I'm a senior.
I'm Emma. I'm a junior. So we just got back from April 12th through 22nd. We went to Athens, Florence, Rome.
Delphi.
Delphi, and we went to Pompeii and Pisa for our day trips. And there were around 25 of us, and we all went, and it was actually a really good experience. Like, I had high expectations, but it definitely outshone all of them.
Yeah, it was definitely like, every place we went, all by the local tour guides, like, we like, connected with them, and like, we just learned a lot from them.
So we started out in Athens. We spent two nights there. So as soon as we flew in, we headed back to our hotel, and then we just started by walking around the city before we headed to a little district for dinner outside that night. And it was, we were lucky. It was amazing.
The weather was beautiful.
Weather was beautiful, and we stopped by, changing up the guards.
Very different than the Arlington National Cemetery. The, I mean, the outfits are everywhere you go, obviously, all different countries. Like, I know if anyone's ever been to, like, the one in London, but like, it was definitely really interesting to see, like, what they, like, do there, like, how it's different, like, from what we do here. And then, yeah, so we ate outside, and then we had a little time, like, with our tour guide, and we walked around that district and shopped, and we ate, and we had gelato. And then we went back to our hotel, and we slept, and then when we woke up, then, I don't know, this was my favorite day. We went to the Parthenon, right to the Acropolis. That was, that was the big thing that we did that day, and it was our tour guide Barbara, that was her name, I think.
Sounds about right.
Yes.
She's probably not watching, it's okay.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. She might be. Yeah, so we went to the Acropolis, and just like, walking up, like, the Acropolis, it's like, okay, like, okay, this is like, what you read about. This is what, this is the pictures you see, like, in books, and it was just, I don't know, it was just so amazing.
And then, my favorite part about that actually was, the Acropolis itself was amazing. You could see, like, all over Athens, and like, even farther beyond, like, the mountains and everything. But then we went to the Acropolis Museum, and that was where you could see, they left, some portions of the floor was made of glass, so you could see the ruins from, like, the ancient civilizations that were there. And that was really cool, because, like, and we've always learned about that in history, and we've always seen pictures of, like, what they thought it looked like in books, but then we saw it in real life, and we were like, wow, like, this is thousands of years old.
Yeah, it's, it's right there.
It was, like, surreal.
Yeah, and so, yeah, whenever we had, like, time to, like, explore, like, kind of like, on our own, we, there was always, like, pretty much always an option to go to a museum, and I know that, like, most of us usually did that, and like, obviously, like, we don't regret it.
Yeah.
Like, the Acropolis Museum was amazing.
Mm-hmm, and all the art there, too. It was all, the art and everything about that was just amazing.
And then, that night for dinner, we did a cooking class, like, with, like, traditional Greek foods. We made, what were they called? Domates.
Domates.
We wrapped stuff in grape leaves.
Yeah.
I tried some new foods.
Yeah, it was a lot different than what we had here. So that was mixing it up, but it was really good.
Yeah.
And then, the next day, that was our last night in Athens. The next day, we headed for the Temple of Poseidon, and that was, every, every step that we went to, I established a new favorite part. And that was my favorite part for a little bit. But that was just amazing, because not only was it just like, this huge temple, and it was amazing with, like, the architecture, but it was something that they so passionately believed in.
Yeah.
And they believed, like, okay, if we build this temple here, then all of our ships will be guided home safely, and we'll have, like, be graced by the gods, and it's just, it's amazing to get that aspect of the culture. Even if it wasn't modern-day Greece, it was still what it was like some day or another, and it's so different than what we see here.
Yes, especially that place. You're just driving, like, through the mountains, and you come around a corner, and it's a temple that is, like, thousands of years old, that they built thousands of years ago. But all the places we went to, especially that place, there's always, like, some, a story, like, attached. And the story of that place was, it was the, how they named the Aegean Sea, and King Aegean jumped into the ocean because he thought his son was killed by the Minotaur. So it was like, every, like, place we went had, like, some sort of connection, like, to, like, the mythology, and you're like, okay, it's actually right here, like, thousands of years ago. This is what, this is what people actually thought, and this is why they did the things that they did.
Yeah, gives a little perspective.
Yeah. So then we kept driving, and we got to Delphi, and Delphi was, Delphi was really cool. It was like, it's like, it's very small, like, it wasn't as, I didn't think it was, like, as touristy as Athens, because it's, it was definitely smaller, and there's all, like, the little streets and stuff, and then it was on the side of a mountain. So it's like, everywhere you looked, like, you had this, like, beautiful view, like, everywhere.
Also green.
Yeah, all green, very green. So then, we, I ate dinner, like, that night in Delphi, and was that when, the window view of dancing?
That was in Greece.
Oh, well, no, I didn't. Okay, what, whatever.
Not important.
I thought it was in Delphi, but it wasn't. So then we, like, walked around Delphi, and that was cool. And then, the next day, we went to, like, the Temple of Apollo, which is, like, where the oracle, like, the oracle of Delphi is, and that was probably, like, where we, I'd say, like, we learned the most. Like, I mean, we, like, had a joke that our friend was gonna choose her college, because the oracle was gonna tell her which one to choose. Turns out, the oracle's not a person. It's just, it's just, it's like, an idea, and it was, like, that they believed that if they, like, went there, that all, like, their answers, like, everything was gonna be solved, but it, the oracle wasn't gonna tell them what to do. It was kind of gonna explain to them their options, and they, they had to choose for themselves. Like, it wasn't, I, like, I had this, like, what I thought, like, the oracle was, it's like, oh, like, here's your destiny. It was kind of like, here, here are your options, like, they kind of laid out your options, and then, like, do, like, what's right for you. That's, like, what I got.
Yeah, I feel like everything that we saw in Greece especially, so different from how I pictured it, because I always thought of it as, like, they just had full blind faith in these gods, that they couldn't see, and they couldn't hear them, and they just believed that whatever happened was them deciding what was right for them. But it was more, they were in control of their own lives than I had always thought would do.
Yeah, yeah, it was something that just, they, like, just had, just to, like, kind of, like, have, like, something to, like, like, think about.
Yeah, it was just a really striking contrast to what I thought.
Yeah, and then also in Delphi, our tour guide, they, we, our, our tour director, Mariana from Explorica, she, every, like, where we went, she was kind of teaching us, like, oh, like, here are the Greek letters. So when we were in Delphi, you can still read the Greek that was on the stones, and our tour guide was very impressed, like, we could, like, make out some of the letters, and that we, like, could almost, like, translate, like, what it said. So this was also on Marathon Monday, and the, the piece we were reading was about, like, the original marathon, so that was, we thought, like, was really cool.
Yeah, and then, from Delphi, we headed to our boat that was gonna take us to Italy. And the boat was kind of uneventful, but the coolest part definitely was, we met some Italian students, and they knew Italian and
English.
English and Spanish.
And French.
And French, yeah, they were good at language. But it was really cool, because between, some of us took Italian, some of us took Spanish, and we all knew English, and we were able to, like, communicate with them, and we all spoke in, like, all the different languages, because we were trying to meet them halfway, and they were trying to meet us, and it was really cool.
Yeah, it was cool to see, like, that, oh, well, the stuff we actually learned, like, that, like, we are, like, using it, like, when we're there.
It was real-life application, and it was kind of like, the, like, the part where it hit me the most, where I was like, wow, like, these are actually real people, because everywhere else we went, it was kind of touristy.
Like, they all spoke English, and it was just, like, it was cool that we could, like, talk to them, and like, they could understand, like, what we were saying, even though we weren't, like, speaking, like, all in English.
Yeah. And once we got off the boat, we headed towards Florence, and the first night in Florence, I think, we, we got in pretty late from the boat, because it ran late, till late in the day, and then we had to drive. So then we just went back to our hotel, and then
And then, the next morning, like, we, like, went to the Duomo, and we saw that, and then we went to the Academia, and we saw the David, which is obviously, like, I mean, like, you just walk around the corner in the Academia, and you're like, oh my god, like, it's the David, like, it's just, like, one of the craziest things. Like, I mean, like, you can, like, see pictures of art, but when you see them, it's just, like, completely different.
And my favorite part about that, the Academia, actually, wasn't even the David. It was, they had Michelangelo's unfinished works, which you don't care as much about, but they were just giant slabs of marble, and they had, like, the outlines of people that who's in the middle of sculpting, and they never got finished. And it's kind of bittersweet, so I was like, wow, like, that's always gonna look the same. But at the same time, it was like, wow, like, it kind of made it more real, because the David, you always just see it, and it's just, oh, that's the David, but then you see it, and it's like, wow, that was such a process, like, that, it made it so much more real to see.
Yeah, like, if, if, like, one of the unfinished pieces were finished, like, would it be as famous as the David, like, stuff that you, like, try to, like, think about, like, when, like, you're there?
Yeah.
And then, that night, we just had dinner, like, in the city, and then, the next day, no, that, no, the afternoon, yeah, we went, we drove to Pisa, and we went, like, into the baptistry, and like, you know, took our pictures with the leaning tower. Lots of pictures, lots of posing. But it was, it was very cool to learn about, like, what they started to do, like, when they realized, oh my god, this tower isn't supposed to lean, like, so, how they, like, attempted to fix it, and like, even, like, just the baptistry, I thought was really cool. It was, they had the big, like, baptistry pool in the middle, and like, they used the natural rainwater that would fall into the middle, like, for the baptisms, and then you could go into the church next door only after you had done that. So it was like, it was almost like they had to wait for the rain, so it was, like, kind of like, they were, like, at the mercy of the weather. It's like, you don't want it to rain, but if it does, like, baptism, so.
So then, after, we were in Florence for two nights, right?
Yes.
So then we went home that night, and then the next day, we headed for Rome. And the first day we were in Rome, we went to the Colosseum in the Roman Forum, and
The big stuff.
Yeah. The Forum ended up being my actual favorite, like, the lasting one. And that was really cool, because it was all of the ruins of the Roman roads, and the buildings, and all the stuff that makes history books. Like, I like history, so I've read all, like, I know about this stuff, and I was like, wow, like, Julius Caesar stood there. Like, this is where everything was made. Like, Rome was such an important city and
Yeah, you read about, all about Rome, but it's different, like, when you, like, when you see it, like.
Yeah.
And then, I thought one of the coolest things that we saw was, it was, it was like a church, but it was originally a temple that they had used in ancient Roman times, and then, so the door was, where, where the door was, and then, as, like, the earth, like, changed, and like, times changed, it turned into, like, a Catholic church, and so the door was, like, in different locations. So when they eventually excavated everything, they're like, there's two, there's a door down here, like, what's, what's that doing here? And it's because that's, like, where the ground level was, and it was, like, that's how they got into the, like, that, at that time, and it was just, like, I don't know, I thought it was cool that, when you just, like, dig down, that, like, there's a bunch of stuff here. But then that was kind of, like, all over the city. Like, our tour guide told us that if they, if they wanted to, they could excavate the entire city and find a bunch of stuff, but Rome is, like, a living city. Like, you can't just tear up, it's like, if you wanted to go tear up Boston, like, you can't. Like, there's just, like, too much going on. Like, people live there, like, people work there. It has, like, it's modern sign as well, so it was, like, they're like, oh, yeah, well, under this road could be this, this, and this, and I'm like, dig it up, but you can't. But, I mean, yeah, you're not allowed.
And what did we do next? The Vatican?
Yeah, so then, yeah, the next morning.
So the next day, we went to the Vatican, and that was actually really cool. And we couldn't actually go into, like, the, like, the really important parts, because we're not allowed to do that. But we got to see the Sistine Chapel in St. Peter's, and
And like, the Vatican museums, like, all together.
Yeah, and that was kind of crazy, because it was still the Vatican, even, like, all these years later. And they were like, yeah, like, Michelangelo, like, did this, and like, all these important people did this, and this is still going on.
Yeah, I think the craziest thing about the Sistine Chapel is that they still use it for the same purpose that they did all these years ago, like, when it was built, when Michelangelo painted the ceiling. And still now, when they have to choose a new pope, they, like, have to, like, shut it down, but it's like, oh, like, I'm walking and looking at this thing that, where people are working. Like, they are trying, as, like, a, what is it, the Cardinals, the Cardinals are there, and that's what they're, that's almost like their, that's their job, and we are here to see where they work, like, every day.
Yeah, it's like, the history there is still being made. It was never finished. So even on the ceiling of the Sistine Chapel, they said at one point, the glass windows broken, and it kind of tarnished the ceiling, and it stripped a piece, and they never, they never fixed it, because they were like, well, no one can do it. It's justice. So that was kind of interesting, because even when the ceiling was done, even when the buildings were made, it was never really finished. So that was really cool.
Yeah, and then, then afternoon, we went to the catacombs, which was, I don't know, I think it's cool, but, like, our guide that we had there was, like, really, like, good.
He was funny.
Yeah, he was funny. So it's like, I mean, like, I know, like, people, like, were scared, like, it's, like, underground, and it's dark. Like, so, so we're, like, going down, and he's like, oh, like, and just, like, explaining, like, the way that they, like, honored, like, their dead. Like, again, like, it's so much different than what we do now, but also, the premise is, like, the same. Like, it's everything, like, obviously, like, we've, like, adapted everything, like, over time, but it's, it's basically the same, like, as we do now, and people, like, want to be with their families and all that. So it's, like, down there, it's like, it's, like, scary, but then you're also, like, this is supposed to be, like, like, a special, like, place that they could, like, go. And it was, I thought the cool thing was, it was, like, for everyone. It wasn't just, like, they even, like, buried, like, the, the majority, like, Christians at that time were all, basically, all the Christians were poor, and they, they had a place to be buried as well. They didn't just throw them into a mass grave. It was, they had somewhere special that their family, like, could honor them.
Yeah, it was, some portions, it was kind of creepy, just like, when you think about it, basic terms, it's the catacombs, that's creepy, but then you think about it, and it's like, this is such a peaceful place. Like, this is where people so, put so much time and effort into this, like, for their family. So that was nice, because it was the kind of, like you were saying, like, some of it has changed, because now we have cemeteries, and we have, like, this, all this technology, but at the same time, people just wanted the best for the people they loved. So that was cool.
And then, so, then we slept and, slept that night, and then we got up, and we drove to Pompeii, which, oh my god, like, 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 Rome is, like, well-preserved, but like, not, obviously, nothing is as well-preserved as Pompeii is. It's like, just like, walking through the same streets that, like, people were walking on all that time ago, like, unknowing that, like, what, like, the, well, the travesty that was gonna happen to them, but the fact that, as, like, tragic as, like, the story at Pompeii is, it's like, it's amazing that all the stuff is, like, still preserved. Like, they, they know where the mark, this was a market, this was a home, this was a wealthy home, this was a poor home. And I think one of the coolest things was, is that there's, like, mosaics that are still there, and one of the, the most well-preserved one was, it was a picture of a dog, and with Latin writing, and it was pretty much a beware of dogs sign, but, like, back then Pompeii, it was, like, the same, the same sort of thing, but it was, like, okay, like, some people have beware of dogs signs on their garden. It's like, the same exact thing, like, that they had then, like, we have now, like, the same, like, sorts of stuff.
Yeah, it was partially, like, wow, like, how did they live like this? Like, everything is so different from how it was, but then it was, like, they had a beware of dogs sign.
Yeah.
How different can they really be? Like, when push comes to shove, like, some things just don't change. That's also where we had the best pizza of my life, so.
Oh, it was so good.
And then, so that was our last day. So then, we had to leave the next day, which was really sad.
Yeah, we were sad.
But it was
I miss Mariana, our tour guide.
Yeah, but it was best 10 days of my life.
Yeah.
Without a doubt.
Hands down. Yeah.
Do you guys have any questions?
I just wanted to ask, did you have a chance to see any of the aqueducts?
So, they were kind of everywhere.
Yeah, they're, like, scattered, like, throughout the city.
So I guess you have to say yes, right?
Yeah, so we didn't, like, get up close or anything, but they were just around the cities.
Yeah, some of them, you can, like, drive through, like, the big arches and stuff, like, are just, like, on the roads, and you just, like, drive through.
Yeah, I'd be like, wow, look at that arch, and then I was like, wait, that's an aqueduct. So yes.
Well, we thank you very, very much.
I have one, if I can, sorry.
I'm going to Italy in the fall, so you have to tell me where, where the place is. Send me the name of the pizza place.
The pizzas cook on the rocks from the Pacific.
Yeah.
We have a little video, just
Oh, great.
The montage. Will you turn, will you pull, Jen, get the
I love this one.
Take a look.
So only two of our students are here tonight, but everybody is in the studio, theoretically. And they won't tell you, but I will tell you, that we were complimented on how wonderful they were everywhere we went, by the servers and the tour guides and random people on the street. So we were very, very proud of them.
Thank you, ladies, for that presentation, and thank you. This is, it's just so wonderful to see education brought into the real-world experiences, and I think that's a, the experience of a lifetime. I'm glad you guys were able to enjoy that.
Looking forward to it.
All right, we move on to our student presentation. Joe, good luck following that. Welcome, Joe, how are you?
Good, how are you? Good afternoon, everybody. First, I'd like to welcome Mr. Ragsdale. Just to introduce myself first. I'm Joe Wilson. I'm a junior here at the high school. And before I go into my presentation, just wanted to introduce myself. So this afternoon, Wilmington's Emergency Services, in conjunction with the Wilmington High School, held our annual mock crash in the student parking lot, the Old Swain School Lot. We do this every year before senior prom to educate the students on the dangers of impaired driving, whether it be alcohol or illegal substances of any kind. Students from WHS Lamp Lighters are the actors in the mock crash, and there's a full-scale police, fire, and EMS response to the crash, where they demonstrate the jaws of life and how they extricate someone from a vehicle when they can't get out under their own power, or when they can't be pulled out by someone else. We do this every year to show everybody, really, that impaired driving is not a joke. There is no, I'm fine if you're drunk, you're drunk, if, even if it's one or two, you're impaired. And it has destroyed lives, and I think we do this every year, so they really understand just how many lives it has destroyed, and just how devastating it hap, it is when something like this happens. And senior prom is this Friday, the 11th, Friday night. This past week, letters went out that juniors and seniors were accepted into Wilmington's NHS, National Honor Society. Our advisor is here, Ms. Tucker, is our advisor for National Honor Society. The induction ceremony is May 22nd. One of my favorite parts about NHS is the tutoring program, the mentoring program. So all NHS students are required to tutor a student in the younger grades from, is it, Ms. Tucker, is it all the way to first?
All the way.
All the way. So a student gets assigned someone they tutor. They meet every week, and I think it's really cool, because I work at CARES at one of the schools, the West, actually. So I see a couple of the NHS tutors come in every weekend. The kids, the kids do enjoy it. I know, maybe, it's in their gym time, and they don't want to admit that they like it, but they do. And it's very beneficial for the older student, for the NHS student as well. On the 18th and 19th, WHS Lamp Lighters is holding their production of Addams Family. They've been working on this for a while. It's really cool. It's a spin-off of the traditional Addams Family, and the technical rehearsals are all of next week for it. One of my good friends, Brian, is in the show. He's pretty excited, and he's been encouraging everybody to go, so I also encourage, if you are able to make it, to go to the show. Last week, Band and Strings had their final concert of the year. This was really special for many groups of people, especially the seniors, whose last concert this was in each program. They also had an opportunity to play with the younger kids in fourth and fifth grade, the kids who have just started out in band or strings. And Caroline, you're in strings, right? And I can tell you, the kids loved it. They talking about it at CARES, and they loved seeing you guys play, and they loved playing with you guys, and I think it was really special for them, for both. On May 2nd, Wilmington High School held the Special Olympics, out on our football field there, with Wilmington and Burlington. I love the Special Olympics. I think it's a great event. It's held very near and dear to many people in Wilmington's hearts, past students, post-graduates, and present students. Everybody gets involved in the Special Olympics. Everybody loves it. One of the, one of the post-graduates I work with at Market Basket, my next shift, he was telling me all about the Special Olympics, and what a great time he had. And I think it's really cool that everyone goes out. All the teachers were bringing classes out. Students really got to participate with these kids, and they had a great time, and it's awesome. They always have a good time. And for students, like, a bunch of students volunteered, so they were paired up with their buddy, and they went around the field, and they played soccer, and they ran little relays back and forth, and they were all having a good time, despite the heat. It was very It was very hot that day, but everyone still had a great time. And the art show was, when was it, Ms. Tucker?
Friday.
Friday, Friday and Saturday. Um, the annual art show is held at the middle school. I did not have anything in the art show. Very rarely do I have anything in the art show. But I know it's always cool to go and see everybody's works, um, from the preschool to the high school, um, just to see what talent these kids in this town really do have. And it's really cool to go and see. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Outstanding. Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Have a great night.
See you next morning. All right, Paul, you have a superintendent report for us?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Joe just stole a little bit of my thunder. Special Olympics, I thought it was just a great, great day. Close to 240 participants, Wilmington Public Schools joining us. What people don't realize is what a minute of a task it is to pull this off. I mean, there's a lot of logistics that need to be dealt with from sponsors, donations, transportation, volunteers, everything. And it just was a great, great day. And Diana Hill and Mary Lou McDonough did a fabulous job in coordinating that along with all the rest of the staff and, and all the people who volunteered their time. It was just, uh, just a great, great, uh, a great take. It was really, really, really good. And, uh, looking forward to hosting it moving forward. And it'll get better and better each year as we, there's always a little kink, so you work them out and you move on. And I just wanted to mention that, um, back a while ago, Laura Stinson had presented Walking School Bus and we talked about doing it at the Shawshine School, so we have a tentative date of May 29th. Uh, she's worked with, uh, the principal, Lisa King, as well as safety officer, Brian Moon. So, uh, the tentative date, I think stuff will be going out. They've identified a bus, a location, and so forth, so more information, but I just wanted to let you know to have it on your radar. That school starts at nine o'clock in the morning, so if anyone's planning on, you know, going or walking or, uh, you know, just watching the kids come into the school, so. Hopefully on the 23rd, I might have more information definitive, but I just wanted to let you guys know that. Good, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. All right, that leads us to our next order of business, which is, um, second reading of two, uh, policy, proposed policy changes. We've had our first reading. And members have had a chance to, uh, read and digest the proposed changes. If there's any question, comments regarding these changes. All right, then, yes, Peggy?
I just make a comment that, um, I think we're very lucky with our staff, because when we go to do something like this, we know that Mary Palin has looked at every if, and, and but about this policy and, um, explains to us anything that was changed and why. And so I feel like we couldn't, we can be secure in the knowledge that this, these are two great policies that, and I think Frank Antonelli, thank you so much for your help, for sure on that one.
Yes, David. And David, by the way, I neglected to say, uh, welcome to the school committee. I went through the opening of the school committee without even acknowledging you, so congratulations on your election and welcome.
Thank you. Um, so I have, uh, comments on, I think, two changes that, um, that I think need to be made to the, um, to the policies, to the wording. On the first one, for the free and reduced-priced food services, um, so the second paragraph, really, the second, the second half, uh, that starts with "no child who has a teacher believes is improperly nourished", um, and then at the end says, "because proper application has not been received from his parents or guardians", and I think that needs to be changed to his or her.
Come last of all, Peggy.
Sorry, this is, uh, it's actually just the, um, the free, so the free and reduced-priced food services, the updated proposal, and it's the end of the second paragraph.
Yes, uh, yes, of course.
This is, uh, policy E F C, and, uh, you're suggesting that we change from his parents to his or her parents? And I agree with that 100%. I think that's a good change, too.
Yep, that makes sense. All right, we certainly, certainly should take.
Can we vote that with the understanding that that changed?
Yeah, I think we certainly can. Was there, uh, to this free and reduced-priced food services policy change? Is there any other comments, suggestions, or remarks? All right, so I would accept a motion to, uh, accept this, uh, policy change with the addition that Mr. Ragsdale has, uh, has suggested. Uh, is somebody willing to make such a motion? M J, second? Peggy? All those in favor? That is unanimous. And moving on to our meal charge policy, which is policy, uh, E F D. Likewise, does anybody, uh, have any comments, suggestions, remarks regarding our second reading of this? Yes, David?
So on the second page of the policy, um, in the middle, under the section for delinquent accounts slash collections, so currently reads, "Failure to maintain up-to-date accounts may result in a delay of a student's fee-based extracurricular school services." I don't think that that is, uh, clear enough of what we mean. I thought that in, um, in Mr. Antonelli's presentation in the last meeting, that he explained very clearly what that actually entails, that you can't participate in fee-based extracurricular activities until the account is brought current. Um, but I think that this is not, not clear what that means and what the real consequence is. A delay in their extracurricular school services. So I have an alternative wording that I can propose, um, that would say that failure to maintain up-to-date accounts may result in a student being denied the ability to participate in fee-based extracurricular activities until the outstanding balance is resolved, which I think is what the actual policy is, if I'm not, if I, if I understand correctly from, uh, from the presentation at the last meeting.
I believe that's accurate. That's, yes. Uh, and I believe you're, certainly the spirit is accurate. Um, I think that's more of a change than, um, that's, that's more of a substantive change than changing his or her. Uh, so I don't know if we want to table this and have a, a s- a third reading? Uh, or whether we want to consider that change tonight? Jen?
I think that we decided on that wording because it wasn't an exact, they will be denied. It was sort of a way to say, it could be delayed, it could be, that there was some space there.
To leave some discretion?
Just in case, like, I guess to not make a hard line. I think, I think we discussed it and that was sort of how we, but I agree and I hear that, that it may not be clear enough, but I think that there was, it was purposeful in, in writing it that way, so.
I certainly see the wisdom of that, yes.
And I would just suggest that in Wilmington, we are fortunate not to have a lot of fee-based activities. I think the only example we could think of as a group last time was a wonderful trip like we just heard about. Um, but certainly there's no fees for athletics or clubs or things like that, so I, I, I struggled a little bit with the fee-based part, but I understand the spirit of it and I know that some of this wording is coming down from higher above than us as well.
All right. David, your thoughts on, um, the remarks of your colleagues?
I don't, I don't remember the discussion that Julie was referring to, so I can't remember. Uh, I thought that the may result was the, the, sort of the giving the wiggle room. But I, this is not something that I feel extremely strongly, strong about. That was my, you know, that was my thought on reading through it, but it's not something that I think is a fatal flaw in the policy.
All right. Well, I, I see a potential for two, or I see two potential motions that could be made. Either, uh, tabling to continue review or approval of this policy as it stands. Is anyone willing to make either of those motions? Or, or a third that I haven't considered?
Approval as it stands.
Okay, do I have a second for that? David, all right. Um, all those in favor? All right, that is unanimous. All right, on a new business, we are, uh, looking at the school year calendar and we are looking at a slight revision. Paul, you want to take us through that?
Thank you. Um, with the unfortunate passing of Representative Moselli, the, um, state primary on September 4th, we believe will probably be a pretty high turnout. That typically is, or next school year would be the first day for kindergarten. The town votes at both the Wildwood and Bartwell, so, um, in this calendar, the only change we made is just to start kindergarten a day later on, on the Wednesday, September 5th. Um, that way we don't, usually if, if there's, we don't think there's going to be a big turnout or, or so forth. We're okay with having school, but I don't think it's for kindergarten and preschool, so I think it behooves us to just delay one day, um, the start of kindergarten and preschool because of that. That's the only change to the calendar, as, as it was approved back in a month or so ago.
Any questions, comments?
I have a quick question. And you have to refresh my memory because it's that time of the year. When is the professional development aspects built into the calendar? Because I only see one in the month of November and, um, I know there's, I've seen two curriculum days on Fridays, but when, when are those created? Because I, I, I'm forgetting for not being able to recall, but.
We have, we have the full day, um, Professional Development Day usually on Election Day in November. That's what you say. And then there are curriculum, early release days throughout the.
On the calendar?
Yeah, throughout the calendar.
So there's no, um, okay, so those act as? Because I was.
Early dismissal to the students.
Okay, well, I just didn't know if, if there were workshop aspects to those early, those curriculum days? Or if they were working on building the curriculum within the departments?
Yeah, I think those decisions, what we do in these, um, early release days kind of will be developed when we start the school year.
Okay, I just wanted to kind of make sure that there are areas built in. I just, you know, to ensure before we roll out with the final.
Yeah, it is no change from what we've done in the past. The only change here is just because of the election, we just moved that. And there's no 180-day requirement on kindergarten and preschool, so.
Thank you. I just thought since it was something that I'd ask.
All right, seeing no further discussion, I would accept a motion to approve the revised 2018-2019 school year calendar. Tom, second by Peggy. All those in favor? That is unanimous.
I'm sure the preschool and kindergarten parents will either be happy with you or cursing you.
All right, we also, uh, as per, um, legal obligation, we are, we have received our SEEM FY19 budget. This is informational. Paul, do you have anything to add?
No, I think, uh, each year we, we have to bring back to, all the SEEM communities bring back to the school committee a copy of the, the, the following year's budget just for informational purposes, so, so you have it.
All right, our next order of business is our school committee reorganization. Each year we, uh, choose new officers, being the chairperson, vice-chairperson, and secretary. I've very much enjoyed my year as, uh, chairperson. I am, uh, looking forward to, to new blood in this chair. So I will open up the floor to, for nominations. Peggy?
I'd like to nominate Julie as, um, chairperson.
All right.
Mrs. Bressad.
Is there a second for that nomination? Jen, all right. Um, we take a vote then? All those in favor of Julie acting as chair? All right, that is, uh, five, five in favor? Oh, David, did you raise your hand or no? Yeah, okay, six in favor? Uh, all those opposed? Abstentions, okay. So six in favor, one abstention. All right, Julie. No more delay.
Okay, so our next officer that I will accept a nomination for is Vice Chair. Mr. Bjork.
Let's nominate Jen.
Is there a second? Mrs. Kane, okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of Jen Bryson as Vice Chair, please indicate.
Vote for yourself, don't abstain.
Yeah, she can. Vote for herself, okay, that would be unanimous. Thank you very much. Welcome, Jen. Okay, and then the other officer position that we take a nomination for is Secretary. Any nominations for Secretary? Mr. Talbot.
I can second that.
Any discussion? Mrs. Kane?
I guess I'd like to say that, um, this is my last year here and, um, I would, I'd like you to think I would like to, um, be the Secretary if that's possible. If not, I understand, um, and I would support MJ. I started out as Secretary my first year, 18 years ago, and now going into the 19th, and that's not a good reason to, to vote for me. However, I feel like I have earned to be the Secretary if that's what's available at this point.
I can decline that nomination and, um, since it is Peggy's last year, I have no problem giving up that nomination to Peggy.
Thank you, MJ.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will take a vote for Mrs. Kane as Secretary. All those in favor? That would be unanimous. Thank you, Tristan. Okay, public comment? Did I skip some? I know, I've got to do the subcommittees, too. I just realized that. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. I was remiss in overlooking our subcommittee assignments. I know that they were, the current assignments were shared in our school committee packet. Mr. Ragsdale, we're kind of throwing a lot at you tonight. I don't know if you've had a chance to take a look at those and consider what you might be interested in, or if the committee has had a chance to consider what they'd like to participate in. Okay, yeah, thank you very much. How are we feeling about subcommittees, just in general, before we go through it? Are people ready to raise their hands or decline? All right, well, let's just go through the list then. Um, Policy Subcommittee, right now, we have Mrs. Kane as Chair, we have Jen Bryson, we have Mr. Bjork, and then we had MJ as alternate. Any thoughts on Policy Subcommittee? Mr. Talbot?
You know, kind of suggest that with, with these, uh, subcommittees, if we could put like when the meeting times are so we'd have a better idea of what the availability is?
Yeah, that's, that's. Yeah, I think that's really helpful. We've got, you'll notice under a couple of these, um, where it is a regular meeting, we've tried to indicate. The Policy Subcommittee, it's generally as needed. And I, I wasn't involved maybe a handful of times over the course of the year. And did the Subcommittee for Policies work together on their availability?
Yeah, and so usually we met actually prior to this meeting.
That worked out.
And that worked out nicely, so we met at 6:30 or 6:00 prior to our, um, 7:00.
Oh, the same as our regular school committee meeting, okay.
And I think the last time we had decided that we want the new superintendent to be involved if there's some policies that he's looking at. Um, and so we kind of put it on hold for this month. When it comes back. But we do have a couple of things that could be worked on. And I certainly, anyone who wants to take over and be the chairperson of that one is fine with me. That's great.
Okay, and with any of our subcommittees, we can have three and we can have one alternate is generally how we've done it, so. Any discussion on policy?
I would, uh, be happy to remain on that Subcommittee. I missed a couple of meetings, but now that some of my duties have been, uh, lessened, I should be able to participate better in that.
I'll, I'll remain on it, but it's, if anyone else wants to be this, the Chair, that's fine.
And I'm happy to remain on it, or MJ has an alternative. She wants my spot, she can.
That's fine, thank you. I've, I've sat on it for a couple of years. That's fine, thank you. I've, I've sat on it for a couple of years, and I, I just don't know.
So it's, I'm hearing that people are happy with the current makeup of the Policy Subcommittee, and we'll keep it as is? Okay. Sick Bank Subcommittee, we do need to replace Mr. Mullis. He was on this one. We also had Mr. Bjork and Mrs. Kane. And that one, again, meetings are as needed a couple of times a year, if I'm correct?
Yeah, the first year I did it, I think we might have met once, Tom, maybe not at all, and then this past year was a couple, a few times.
Okay.
The other part of that is that we decide, it's always at, like, 3:00, after the teachers or the staff's school day, so it's always, like, at 3:00. And it's quick, they're like 10 minutes, usually, they're not...
We only need, and, okay, thank you, Mr. Bjork, we really only need two on that one, if...
I can still do that one if, maybe?
Yep, I can still do that.
Okay.
Okay, so we're keeping Sick Bank the same. The next one down, Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee. We actually didn't meet this past year. I think it's been a couple of years, as a matter of fact. So the purpose of this Subcommittee is we stay on top of the evaluation cycle for the superintendent's evaluation. Not a lot of work on the front end of the year. The school committee, each member is responsible for compiling an individual evaluation, and then the Subcommittee would pull it together into one final document. This coming year will be slightly different, where we'll have a new superintendent coming in. So not, not a big-time commitment on that one either. And right now, it was myself, Jen, and Tom. Anybody chomping at the bit?
I'd like to remain on it, just haven't had a chance to do anything.
I'll stay on it.
Tom, you're happy to stand. Okay. Anybody else want to, I'm, I'm happy to step away from it, if somebody else wants to be involved. It's, it's really not too much work, except for at the very end, pulling it together. And I think in the past, we had gotten that done in one meeting. All right, well, hearing you notice discussion, we'll keep it as-is. Okay, all right, the School Committee Representative to the WEF Board of Directors. Right now, we've got MJ. You want to stay on that, MJ, or do you want to step away, or?
It's, it's open, if anybody's interested. My availability, because I own some negotiation teams. It's worked out, having been a part of the discussion, but they've been kind enough to share their work with us, with me, of which to share to the board. So if anybody would like to be more contributing and a part of those meetings, I mean, most certainly, I don't mind remaining if nobody...
MJ, is it this, is it the second Tuesday of every month? Is that accurate? Yeah?
Yes.
I would be happy to do that, if, if you're interested in stepping away.
I just don't have the ability to attend the meetings, so that's...
Okay, so Mr. Ragsdale will do, will be our representative to WEF. The next one down, excuse me, is the Wilmington Public Schools Wellness Advisory Committee. It's, it's typically meeting, attending their meetings and reporting on their activities. It sounds like they were still meeting monthly during the school year, usually weekdays after school. MJ, you were involved with that, and I know Mr. Mullis was. Any update to that?
I haven't participated. I thought Manny was, Manny attended this year.
Okay.
Do you know what days typically?
Wednesdays, typically.
Oh, it's Wednesdays?
Mm-hmm. Around, I believe, 3:15, 3:30 is when they usually commence.
Any, anyone interested in, in doing that? Or MJ, you want to continue?
I don't mind taking it over again.
Okay. So we'll take off the word alternate, and now you're it. I take off Mr. Mullis's name? Okay, the School Committee Representative to CPAC. Right now, we have Mrs. Kane and Mrs. Bryson.
If, it's at nighttime. It's Thursday, the second Thursday, second Thursday of the month. And it's a wonderful organization, it's great, but if somebody else would like to take over, it's difficult for me to get there at night, like that.
I would be willing to do that.
Great. It's a difficult evening for me as well, so I, I kind of felt I was sort of an alternate, so I would go if I knew, but I didn't go to every meeting. So I'm happy to be an alternate if David can't be there, but I think to put me down as an, I can't do it, unregularly.
Okay, so we'll have Mr. Ragsdale be our representative, with Mrs. Bryson as our alternate, and the two of you can work it out if they can't be there.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, the executive session minutes that has traditionally been held by the Chair. So I guess I'll take that one back. School Committee Legislative Representative, that has been Mrs. Burns, longstanding.
I'd like to continue if no one else has interest in it.
I'd like to see MJ continue, if possible, here.
Any interest to you, or is that a conflict?
No, I'd like, I'd like you to keep doing it.
I guess that would be you.
Thank you.
Okay, School Committee Handbook slash Protocol. I don't believe that this Subcommittee met too much over this past year. We do have a handbook for all school committee members, and, and we make changes as is appropriate. Right now, we have Mrs. Kane as Chair, we have Mrs. Burns, and Mr. Mullis. So we could take Mr. Mullis off of that. Any thoughts?
What are the times for meetings for that?
That was just when we could get together.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll take over his part for that.
Okay, and then we have a couple of negotiation teams that we can take off, but we need to replace with others. So I would recommend that we take off the negotiation team with the WTA, which was through June of 2017. We have completed that. We can also take off the negotiation team with Food Services, because that is complete, but we need to add our negotiation team with our nurses, and I believe that's Mrs. Bryson and Mrs. Burns?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and we need to add our negotiation team with our administrative assistants, and we had Peggy, and we had Manny. So we need to replace Manny. If we think we need to.
I thought we had Steve, because I remember, I, we were the nurses.
No, that was Food Services and the teachers.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to do that.
Do that, okay. Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale.
Those meetings are just for informational purposes. After school, 3:30, either weekly or every other week, just so we know. In the same, similar with the nurses. That's typically, you know, it could be weekly or every other week, same time.
Okay, great, thank you. All righty, and I'm seeing another Subcommittee that I believe we can remove from our list, the Town Master Facilities Plan, School Committee Representative, because I believe their work is complete?
Yeah, they, they're on.
Okay.
Can I, okay. I'm just thinking, I know that there was discussion, it, it's maybe just discussion, that depending upon the, what transpires in the town over the next year or so, may impact that piece with that. Has that disbanded? Do you know, Paul?
I believe...
I mean, I know it's completed, but I just don't know if the committee itself has disbanded.
I believe at the last meeting, everyone was told that it was, I guess we'll say, finished.
Okay. I just didn't, I didn't know.
Yeah, no, I hear in case something comes up. I guess what we could do if, we could either leave it here, or if something comes up, I can let you know, and we can put it on an agenda item to add it, you know, during the course of the school year, because I'm not sure how much of any additional work will be done right now.
No worries, I just, you know...
No, that's a good point.
You can keep them, they, they do it right, so.
And they have you on their email list, anyway?
Yeah.
You've been getting, okay, good. All right, if, if no...
I haven't gotten anything, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, then I don't, I don't think it hurts to leave it on our list.
That's fine.
And we can address it as needed. Okay, and then we've got School Committee, Family Communication, Relations, Engagement. Not too much work has gone on with this Subcommittee, but we had Mrs. Bryson, myself, Mr. Talbot, and we had MJ as an alternate. I think I will have enough on my plate, so I will step down from this one, and certainly, somebody else could step up.
I'd like to stay on it.
Okay. You want to stay? Okay. Mrs. Burns, do you want to move?
It's the School Committee, Family Communication, Relations, kind of...
Can I just make a suggestion?
Sure.
I'm going to throw it out, it's rudimentary, so. With the Subcommittee, we're bringing on the new superintendent. I'm thinking, I'm just thinking, just for consistency purposes, this is kind of one of the aspects he will be entering our district with. I'm just thinking, would it make sense to, as a part of, you know, and, you know, at this juncture, anyway, if those who are part of that new superintendent get on board committee to kind of take this over to this year, because I, I see this as evolving this year, especially with Dr. Brands incoming. I'm, I'm just bringing up as a suggestion. I mean, I know you have a full page, Dave, but I just thought that for consistency, it just may be a good bridge.
Sounds like a good idea. Well, I think we haven't done much on that, because we've been sort of waiting, so you're, you might be right, that that might be the proper way to roll that out.
Okay, so why don't we kind of hold? We'll, we'll keep it on there, so it stays on everyone's radar, and as things evolve with Dr. Brands' transition plan and entry plan, we can work as needed. Does that sound fair? Okay, great. Did we cover all the subcommittees? I think so, I think so. Okay. Any reports from prior subcommittees? Mrs. Kane?
I had one thing. I was so excited about the behavioral film that was coming on March 15th, that I misspoke what it's about, so I just wanted to make a correction. Jo Nuhosa told me that she had watched the meeting, and I want to say, I appreciate the plug for the CPAC, but I feel it's important to let you know that it is actually the Behavioral Health Task Force that is responsible for the Behavioral Health Fair on May 15th. The task force is comprised of all school staff and administrators, and just one CPAC member. Christine Murray is the lead of the task force this year. I felt it was important to let you know the staff, because the task force has really worked above and beyond for the district, pulling all this together, and they are an amazing group. So kudos to the group, and March 15th is coming up. So that's the night that's going to be that film that was, I was actually talking about the film, but then it's part of this whole program. So I wanted to correct that and say thank you to all of them who are working on that program. Looking forward to seeing what, what it shows us.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Kane. Any other Subcommittee reports or information we want to share out publicly? Community events? Okay, great. Any correspondence?
None this evening.
None this evening. Okay, future meeting dates and agenda items?
Yeah, could we just mention one, one thing?
Sure.
Assistant Superintendent Gallagher.
As we all know, Massachusetts is leading the nation, and this is the week of celebration of Massachusetts' success since the Ed Reform Act of 93. So this ties into really what we're, we've been talking about, is celebrating student success and teacher's success, and with the efforts of Trish Volpe and our principals, on our website, we tied in Leading the Nation, the celebration of Massachusetts' successes, with Wilmington's success, and we've been running pictures with students, teachers, throughout this week. And I think as this movement moves on into next year, we'll be able to add a lot more of, kind of, as, as we all say, especially after a lot of the student performances, that's why we're all here, to celebrate student success, and pat teachers on the back for a job well done. So just wanted to shout out to Trish Volpe, who does a lot of great work for us, so. It's on our website, for parents, check it out.
All right, great. That's on the district website?
Correct, right on the front page.
Excellent. Great, thank you. Mrs. Bryson?
Speaking of teachers, it is Teacher Appreciation Week, so I'm sure we all want to thank them, and tell them how grateful we are for all the work that they're doing.
It's Nurses Appreciation Week as well.
And Nurses Appreciate, that's true, and Nurses Appreciation Week.
You should have to share the week. It'd seem right.
Is that always the way?
Mrs. Kane?
I just, it just occurred to me, the town was so gracious about naming the auditorium for Joanne. Is, who takes care of working that through? Do we know?
Well, I, I think we're going to have to regroup and figure out how to, what to do, and so forth, so I think collectively, we'll come up with some type of plan and so forth. We'll talk about that, you know, it'll be this school year, but, you know, hopefully, early next school year, and we can, whether, similar to when we did the gym, there was a little dedication and so forth, but I think we want to do something nice for her, so.
So you'll get, we can put it in your hands?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure it's, it's not, and everyone's involved, so, yeah.
So a future agenda item?
Yeah, well, I'm taking, yep.
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
No, I would, I would think it would be the new superintendent that would be taking care of that.
I kind of don't.
Yeah, and I assume from a delegation standpoint, it would probably come to me.
There you go.
And that's fine.
I was just afraid that if we, we all think someone else is doing it, and it's going to get dropped somewhere, so.
Good point.
We'll get it.
I don't know how it works in the town.
Yeah, if anyone knows, you know, my wife, she won't let me forget it, so we'll, she'll be doing something, so. As well as Ms. Rafi back there, who keeps me...
Your work wife.
Yeah, keeps me in line.
Keeping you in line, right? What do they say, happy wife, happy life?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. All righty, so future meeting dates and agenda items. So our next meeting in May would be on May 23rd. I might be so bold to suggest we look at what we potentially have on that agenda, because that will be a busy week for the school committee. We have, the 22nd is the National Honor Society induction, and the 24th would be the Underclassmen Awards, and then the following week, we've got a couple of great events coming up, so unless there's anything real pressing, perhaps we could consider doing away with the regular school committee meeting on the 23rd.
Here's my only thought on that.
Okay.
That is, I believe that's Joe's last meeting.
The 13th?
Oh, he will, okay. Never mind.
Okay.
Let me look at what we had planned for the agenda on the 23rd, and I'll get back to you, Julie.
Okay, fair, fair enough.
And see, you know, if we can move stuff that's on there, that's no problem.
If there isn't anything, if there's anything that can be moved, great. If, if there's things that we need to take attention to, then it is what it is. So everybody kind of keep, keep the 23rd on your calendars still. Okay.
Then I'll get back to you.
All right, great, fair enough. Okay, then I will call for one last motion, please, a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Bryson, seconded by Mr. Ragsdale. All those in favor? Great, thank you very much.